So in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so for this evening, sorry, for this evening, Jennifer Ragnow, Charles Brown, and Councilman Emberson asked to be excused. Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert LaCourte?
Here.
Shaw Keller?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Mark Dancy?
Here.
Chairman Orsini?
Here.
So minutes from the regular meeting on July 16?
Only Mark Dancy cannot vote.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
And a second from Bob LaCourte.
Okay, Mark Orsini, Bob LaCourte. Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And the regular meeting from August 6, 2025?
Who's he, wait a minute, let me see. Shaw and Bob LaCourte, the ones that are here, they cannot vote.
Okay, I will move those minutes.
Second.
Bob Thomas, seconds.
Okay. Hold on one second. Okay. Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Bob Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So pathways and trails plan, we heard this at, when I think, the June meeting, and do we need an actual vote on this because it's part of the master plan?
Yeah, it's a resolution memorializing that action, so.
All right. So I will make a motion to approve the additive to the master plan for the pathways and trails plan.
Second.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Bob LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mark, I'm not sure if you were there or not because there's no names on here.
I was not.
Okay, thank you. And then Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make you aware, just to make you aware, you're going to hear a discussion about the ordinance right now, and right after the ordinance, there's going to be a resolution taken. The resolution, it's going to have a motion and memorization the same day, just so everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, and so maybe since Mark is talking to Matt, I'll just flip those because we had a minor subdivision tonight, and so the Minor Subdivision Committee consisting of myself, Mahir, and Bob Thomas heard about a subdivision for Catalent Pharma for the property on the corner of Schoolhouse and Elizabeth. It's a fully compliant, otherwise it wouldn't be before the Minor Subdivision Committee, Minor Subdivision, with a simply splitting of the lot. And so there's no building being proposed by Catalent Pharma. And so our agreement as part of the Minor Subcommittee was simply to approve that with the conditions of the Technical Review Committee in terms of lot numbering, et cetera, plot plans, and anything else. And Mark, I was just going through that bill while you were talking to Matt, so anything to add to that?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't hear the beginning, but basically it's a very large lot and combined, dividing into two fully compliant lots, and that's why it was before the Minor Subdivision Committee because there were no variances.
So, yeah, the Minor Subcommittee recommended, and so will you need to bring it to the Planning Board for full vote?
No, no, just.
Or just Minor Sub?
Just the three of you. So one of you first and second, and then I'll call all three names.
So I'll move it.
Second.
Bob Thomas, second.
All right, I'll come over. You, Bob Thomas, okay. Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And then Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
So now you can go back to the ordinance and talk about it.
Sounds good. Mark, you're up.
Yeah, so this is something that's been in the master plan going back to, I think, 2007. Bottom line is, before the township did the redevelopment zone in the 90s, that goes, the Renaissance redevelopment area that goes along Route 27, I believe what happened was the previous zoning was general business that ran for, you know, a good distance, maybe a mile or more, along Route 27, Somerset Street, going back several hundred feet. And then when the town did the redevelopment zoning, in several places, it didn't go the full depth of that general business zone. So there's the redevelopment zoning along Route 27, and then back away from the highway, there are a number of little residential areas that are zoned general business, which is for highway-oriented, you know, retail, office, fast food places, things like that. And there are these homes zoned general business back away from Route 27. So the proposal is to put those in the R7 zone, those residential areas in the R7 zone, which is the zoning of the neighborhood that's right across the street, you know, that surrounds these properties, and just to put these residential properties back into a residential zone. I think it's, again, it's been in the master plan for a long time. I think it was kind of a, maybe a low-hanging fruit, and we basically got around to doing that. Certainly, I can certainly say it's consistent with the master plan because it's in the master plan, specifically recommended.
Any questions from the board?
Are we sure that there isn't somebody there that would like to convert their house into a taco stand or something? I suppose we'll hear from them if there is.
Yeah, we suppose so. But, yeah, I mean, it's consistent, and none of those properties is large enough to accommodate a use such as a Wawa or an STS or AutoZone or, you know, whatever has sprung up around 27 itself, and you wouldn't want that in the middle of your neighborhood. So I think this basically actually does those homeowners a favor because their property is zoned as to what it should be. So with that, I'll make a motion to that the Planning Board endorses this, and we'll send it back to council for their action.
Second.
Pete, do I need to, can I do each, do I have to do first the ordinance and then the resolution?
Yep.
Or just, okay. Okay, so first will be the ordinance. Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And so then I move the resolution memorializing same.
Second.
Bob Thomas, second.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. All right. So, I should have done this at the top, but the application for Davidson Properties LLC, which is also on Davidson Avenue.
Wait, you have to do public comment?
Yeah, I know, I'm just wanting people to know, so in case they're here for that, I don't, I don't forget. 230 Davidson Avenue, Davidson Properties LLC, that's carried to November 5 without further notification. That is a small warehouse at the rear of the existing building at 230 Davidson. That is not NPH, so, just to let you know. So carried to November 5 with no further notification. So if you're here for that, come back November 5. With that, yes, move to open the public for any general planning comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, a meeting is open for any general planning comments. If you are here for NPH, there will be a opening to the public for comments specifically on that application at the appropriate time. Seeing no takers, move to close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, Matt, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board. Matt Flynn from Savo Shaw Law Firm in Somerville on behalf of the applicant, NPH. We received some additional feedback from the board and the board consultants on this application, and I was hoping I could borrow counsel for a two-minute sidebar rather than open right up and proceed, if the board doesn't mind.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
All right, we're good.
So, if the board will recall, we were here in May. The project is preliminary and final major site plan with associated C bulk variances to construct a two-building shopping center comprising of just under 25,000 square feet. One building right now is proposed to be entirely retail, just under 4,700 square feet, and a second building made up of first-floor retail and mostly office is proposed at just under 20,000 square feet. The applicant himself intends to occupy the second floor of the mixed-use building as an office for his accounting firm. So the improvements would be made together with other normal site improvements, parking, stormwater management, lighting, landscaping. As the board may be aware, the site is currently vacant and undeveloped. It's designated as Block 502.01, Lot 57.01 in your tax maps, and more commonly known as 390 Davidson. It's a corner lot with frontage along Davidson and New Brunswick Road, and is subject to the retail district overlay, which permits shopping centers as a permitted principal use. So last time we were here, you heard from our civil engineer, we received some feedback from board members and board consultants. We've done a resubmital, attempting to incorporate some of those comments and comply with staff's review memorandums. We have met with Mr. Healy and your consulting engineer twice since our last appearance, but we've heard that some additional feedback might be warranted at this meeting, so we are going to suggest that if there's a design change or something that the board would like to see, I know there's been discussions about combining the two buildings or changing the site layout, we would entertain that tonight. In terms of relief we need for the application, it's not related to the site layout, but we're willing to work with the board and make accommodations for those changes. The variance relief we need is related to parking, 90 spaces required, 86 spaces proposed, minimum drive aisle width, 26 feet required by the ordinance, we're proposing 25, and we're also proposing 10-foot sign setbacks where 20 feet in the retail district overlay is required. So I have our engineer here who can go through the current layout of the site plan, you'll hear compared to where we were in May, that we have reshaped and repositioned the amenity areas, removed some square footage from the buildings, added some landscaping, incorporated some turn restriction off of New Brunswick. But again, we are here to solicit additional feedback, and I do have an exhibit that's prepared by our engineer, which is a colorized site plan. I think that has to be marked as A1, Peter?
Yeah. I think we had A1 last time, so.
Oh, okay.
Let me see what we're up to. One second. I think we may just be at A2.
Okay.
Yeah.
A2?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm going to pass this out and call our engineer, Sri Kotawala.
Sounds good, man. And just as some little guidance for your engineer and your other experts, is just, we understand the premise and the uses that are intended, and it would be really most helpful to, thank you, to highlight the changes so we can give you the feedback that you need compared to maybe what our vision might be.
Someone took, somebody in the building took the other mic out of that thing, so there's not too dear. Do you want to grab the one off the podium, and then when the public goes up, we'll just put another one on the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
So let me just. So we did have Mr. Kotawala qualified last time. I. Yeah, so I can just swear I'm in, confirm his qualifications, and we can run with it. So if you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please?
S-H-R-I, Sri J. Kotawala, K-O-T-D-A-W-A-L-A, 54 Oakland and Mintz Road, Manalapan, New Jersey. Kashi Consulting Company is my company name.
And Mr. Kotawala, you previously appeared and qualified as an expert in the area of engineering, site engineering before this board, is that correct?
Yes.
Since last you appeared and qualified, have your credentials been detrimentally affected at all?
No.
And your license is still in good standing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we can accept him?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Great. So Sri, you heard the chairman's comment. Why don't you give an overview of the project and with specific emphasis on some changes we've made to the plan since we were last here?
Yeah. Primarily, the changes were, basically, we shortened, kind of reduced the size of building and made a distance about 10 feet more, basically, we shifted the building 10 feet away from New Brunswick Road. So like now, we see it's about 32 feet. It used to be about 20 feet. So we kind of cut the size of the building and increased the, like, vegetated or landscaping area in between the building and the road. So because there was a concern about when someone is driving on a North Brunswick Road, they're going to see the buildings. So we tried to add up more landscaping and more green buffer, hoping that that will be screening the building. And there are minor changes related to tree locations and, like, utility areas and all that, but exactly the building looks the same, but it's 10 feet shorter. And total square feet now is reduced less than 25,000 square feet, so we are not falling under category of retail, like a shopping center category. That's a change, basically, we have done, and one of the exhibits shows that now we have more screening there on a North Brunswick Avenue, a North Brunswick Road.
And as a result, did the amount of variance relief we needed relating to the parking area get decreased?
Correct.
And that would be a, what was originally a 21 parking space deficiency is now a four-space deficiency, is that correct?
Eight, 46 and 54.
Okay. One of the other things I think that we did in the plans were we relocated and changed up the amenity areas. Can you talk about that?
Yes, the, our intent was to preserve trees which are along the Davidson Avenue, so that's why we changed the amenity area and tried to save the trees, but we met with the township professionals and decided that area we may shift here or there based on number of trees we can save, existing trees. But at this moment, we tried our best fit based on some assumptions, and we are agreeing to any particular tree is in need of saving, we are ready to save that tree.
And can you confirm for the record that you are in receipt of Mr. Healy's memorandum dated August 25, 2025, as well as the board consulting engineer's memorandum dated August 26, 2025? And with the exception of some testimony that they've asked for, we can comply with all of the technical comments that they want added to the plans, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I had proffered at the last time we were here that one of the reasons that the applicant chose this specific design with the two buildings was because he intends to occupy the site himself for his accounting firm on the second floor of the office building. And the mix of office and retail was designed to give them flexibility for tenants within your ordinance's definition of a shopping center. So we're not intending here to squeeze the most we can out of the site, that's not really the goal here. It's for a site that the applicant wants to use. So if there are specific site design issues that the board would like to discuss, we'd be happy to entertain them. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you had expressed an interest in going down that road.
Yeah, and I also, I want to hear from Mark because, I mean, we have extensive experience with this type of design standard for larger shopping centers right up the road from where this use is. For me, I think it's going to be very difficult with this current layout to adequately buffer from New Brunswick Road, especially with the single mixed building and the parking. I can see where the sidewalk is, I can kind of see that you don't have a lot of room. And I think what the board suggested at your first hearing was to try and make those buildings like an L, maybe, you know, flip that building, the single-story building, the other way, and move some of that parking back towards the interior of the site, and be able to get a strong buffer from New Brunswick Road. And I mean, I can see you've got the driveway on New Brunswick as a right, right turn only out, which is great, and we don't want to get people killed. I think the New Brunswick is, or the Davidson full turn is fine. This board has never had a problem with less parking and less impervious coverage. We always encourage that, if you don't need it, don't build it, or if you don't think you need it, we'll bank it, and you can build it later without having to come back to the board. One-foot drive aisles don't concern me, nor do necessarily the placement of the sign because maybe with a smaller site, you can't be 20 feet back off the road and still see the sign. So none of those concerns me so much, but it's really the design and making sure that the screening is there and that you still have, you know, the movements you have. And I just don't know that, you know, you took, fully took the board's suggestions from the last time, but again, that is just my opinion. And, you know, maybe I want to go to Mark because, again, he has extensive experience, and we can go to the rest of the board, too, to kind of get their thoughts on various aspects, but I want to start with Mark because he has the most experience, and at the end of the day, he's going to be the one reviewing your plans.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, what specifically are you asking me to address?
The way I look at it, we have two or, two, three, three shopping centers on Elizabeth and Schoolhouse, you know, the one where the CVS is, the one across from that, that are bigger, but they have, they're in the same zone, they're the same overlay, and they have very design standards that, you know, where the Dunkin' Donuts is, that also is one of them, that does this on a smaller scale, right, with the recognition that that is nowhere, is nowhere near as big as any of those uses, have that same design feature that you can actually look on a plan or look on a rendering and say, this complies with those type of features. Because we worked very hard to, and I know you worked very hard to get that, those design standards for those shopping centers and for the aggressive amount of landscaping and the kind of pedestrian and activity area or whatever amenities they have, which are getting, are being replicated here. And I understand it's on a much smaller scale. That said, do you feel that this design, or can this design be improved to better match those?
It's a difficult question. It's a very good question, but a difficult one. And the difficulty is, I think, results from the combination of two things. One, again, is the smaller size of the property and the amount of, you know, the square footage of the buildings and the parking that, you know, basically what the applicant intends to build, and the small size of the site. So when you combine those two things, you know, when you just visually compare this plan to the other shopping centers on Elizabeth that were developed under these design standards, you know, certainly the landscaped area along the frontages is not nearly as deep. I think those shopping centers, because they were larger and they had more room to work with, they, I guess, had the opportunity to have those deeper landscaped frontages. And, you know, and perhaps the board and, you know, I reviewed those, too, but it was a long time ago, but I'm sure we pushed them to go in that direction as well. As far as what could be done, I think a lot of it, you know, could there be a larger buffer? I mean, I mean, there certainly could, but there's going to be a kind of a push and pull between, you know, what the applicant is intending as far as the size of the buildings and the square footage, the need to have at least adequate parking. You know, so for example, I mean, a real simple solution, all of the parking that's facing Davidson and New Brunswick goes away, and you make that landscaping. But now you're really going to have a shortage of parking. So what's the right solution? I can't really answer that necessarily for the board. If they were to reduce the amount of square footage, then that reduces the parking demand, and then that there's less of an issue on the parking side. Again, there's a lot of things, Mr. Chair, that go kind of fight against each other.
Yeah.
And some of the things like the applicant's, you know, desire for this property, you know, I can't address that.
Well, I don't have a protractor, but it seems to me that a lot of this could be solved if you take that single-story building and you flip it, make it, make the, make the site layout more of an L. You still get your parking, but now your parking comes in from New Brunswick Road. Your buffer that's quite, looks quite ample between New Brunswick Road and the two-story mixed-use building now is, can be done because you push the parking in. I don't know if you literally flip that building and create like a breezeway or walkway between the two buildings, if you don't want to connect them physically, that, you know, I don't, I don't know if it fits, I'm not. But that was, I know that was what we asked you to consider the last time, was kind of, you know, and you did shrink the buildings, and again, you took a little of the advice, but I think that the biggest thing would have been to sort of like, make it like an L shape, and that way you still get your parking in there. Because, yes, Mark's absolutely right, if you were to. Because yes, Mark's absolutely right, if you were to, and we understand that everything is in proportion, right? You don't have a, I don't know how many acres, Mark, those, some of those other shopping centers are, but on a proportion, you've got two and a half acres here, something like that. You're not going to be able to have hundreds of feet of buffering, right? We understand that. But within the, I think if you were to make it more of an L-shaped configuration, you would be able to work with that a lot easier. I'm just thinking. That was where, that was really what I started with. But again, I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't know any constriction of the site and I don't know, I don't have a protractor to make sure the thing will actually fit if it were flipped.
Well, let me ask, let me ask the, the chair and the, and the board, as far as the buffering is concerned, you have two frontages, one is on, one's New Brunswick Road and one is on Davidson Avenue. Is there a, a feeling of, you know, that one frontage might be less important than the other? Where the emphasis should be?
I think the frontage on New Brunswick Road, in my mind, is more important because it, it's directly across from a functioning residential development. So I, I could see getting rid of all the parking there and making that all landscaping. I'd say the same thing for Davidson, except the fact, for the fact that there really isn't anything on the other side of Davidson Avenue across from that, other than another, an empty house that's going to be done, something's going to be done with, and a company that's there. And there's opportunity to work with that corner if it gets developed at some point in the future. But New Brunswick Road, I think aesthetically is more valuable as, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I very much agree with that.
The other thing I, I don't, I, I'm missing something, okay? I'm getting old, I'm missing something. I don't understand what the aversion is to experimenting with an L-shaped development because I think you could solve a lot of problems with that.
I wouldn't call it an aversion.
That was the suggestion last time too, and it seems that disappeared.
Understood.
I may be putting words in the mouth of the applicant, but I think it's reasonable that the single-story building be the one closer to Davidson because presumably you want to rent that to some sort of user that wants visibility.
Yeah, that's why that building would be proposed as retail.
I understand you need the visibility for that, but this is a, this is a corner that I think has a lot of, I don't know for want of a better word, habitual traffic. You're not attracting tourists, you're not attracting people traveling from, generally from one town to another. This is an, an area where a lot of people are Somerset Run, a lot of people are going to the high school, a lot of people are going to the businesses that are directly around there or the particular residences. My point is, this site is small enough that the advantage of, you know, maybe you don't have total visibility on Davidson, is people will know what's in there. It's not that you have to advertise every store after everything's established. You know, people are, you know, will be going down there the same, a lot of the same drivers all the time. It's, it's not like Easton Avenue or, you know, another street like that. So, you know, you would have enough, if you changed the retail building as part of the L shape, I think you would still have enough visibility. People will see what's there. You're going to have a sign. You know, nobody can see Shop Right from David, from New Brunswick Road or Davidson Avenue, but people sure know how to find it.
Understood. Yeah, we, again, welcoming any other comments at this time.
Yeah, and I mean, to, to, you know, piggyback on what Bob said, you know, you're, you're, I guess, a Davidson there in the orange, right, on this exhibit A2, that's your sort of a town square type of amenity thing. I mean, truthfully, pull that into the center where it's probably much more appreciated if you're going to, you know, get something and sit out and, let's just say this retail is something where you'd get something to eat or drink and there would be tables outside or something like that. Much better to have that in the interior of the site than hard up against Davidson Avenue. So again, swinging that building, making an L, bringing that amenity into the center like a focal point, I won't call it a town square, it's not big enough, but you know what I mean? Really, and then you can buffer that a little bit better too on, on Davidson, even though we all agree, I think that it's maybe the, the less important of the two, two of, of your two frontages.
Great.
I mean, that's, that's, that's me and Bob. We've got a, quite a bit of assemblage of talent at the other end of the board, so I'd like to hear from all of you as well. You've all been familiar with this site.
All right, I'll, I'll go first. So I'm going to resonate with Bob Thomas said with the frontage on New Brunswick Road to equalize it to the opposite side of the greenery. Another concern I have is, I think I mentioned it last time, with the trees, the mature trees that are on New, on Davidson Avenue, are you planning to save all of them?
Generally, what has happened because of the power line? Because of the power line? Those trees are like, like one side loaded and mostly they are like locusts and they are not trees typically is going to be, based on my landscape, like architect's advice was that these trees are not good enough to stay. But if, I decided that I'll walk with Mark and we figure out if any particular tree is good to be saved, we will save it. We, we will make all the effort to whatever the trees are good, we will save.
Yeah.
But if it's not good, we can put a replacement, native trees, which can last longer than like a typical landscaping fancy looking trees.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate that, I mean, but they're not, not mature trees, right? If you replace them. So I frequent that road, right? They are pretty mature trees and I understand what you're saying about the power lines. I think the branches can be cut off and you can save the tree. So I would sort of advise you to revisit.
No, definitely.
Take a look at it.
We'll revisit and whatever the trees we can save, we'll mark it up, show on our map and we'll make the effort to save those trees.
Okay, thank you.
I went and looked at the property yesterday and I would judge about half the trees are dead or dying, as you'd suggested earlier, but another half are, seem to be in pretty good shape. And I do commend you that the single, you are saving the single most important tree, which is close to the corner of Davidson and New Brunswick Road, that's important. Our problem is that to make more room for those trees, we have to subtract something else, either building size or parking size. And if we subtract any more parking, the variance gets bigger. And if we subtract building size, the buildings get less productive. So, but, yeah, I certainly would like to see the trees that are in good shape along Davidson saved because an existing tree is always bigger than the new tree that you would plant. In the very long run, the little trees get big, but not for a while. I have to admit, I don't visualize the L shape that you suggest, Mike. Do you mean that in effect, the single-story building would be an extension toward, would be attached to the two-story building and be an extension toward Davidson, but at right angles to it?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't even, I don't think it would even have to be attached. You could, you could have a breezeway in between or a walkway, or, or you could even put that, that amenity or focal point in between those two buildings. But it just seems to me that if you were to rotate that 90 degrees, either up or down, and, and make this, make the buildings an L, like Bob said, you, a lot of problems go away. You can, you can pull in the parking that's more closer to New Brunswick Road, near where that single-story building is. Then the buffer become as big as the buffer between New Brunswick and the two-story building, which is, which is ample. By shade tree calculation replacement, I think they're, they would, almost about 100 trees, I would rather see those trees planted onsite, so they'd make more room for that. And, and, I mean, they could, they could potentially bring, since it would only be not the broader side, but the shorter side of that rectangle, they could even, even potentially bring that closer, right, to Davidson because it would only be, it would only be a smaller portion of the building than the broader side of the building. So, I mean, again, I, I'm not, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, and I absolutely loathe doing this type of thing in terms of more specifics. But you do need guidance and that, to me, is my, admittedly unprofessional, but accomplishes the planning goals that I think the board is wanting to get through to you, that, that, you know, we're interested in. I, I like to give guidance and then, and then you'll, you're going to design it because that's what you do. And, and I don't, I don't like to go too, too far beyond what we're doing right now, just in terms of, because it's just then becomes, I don't know what the hell I'm talking about because I, I don't have a, an engineering degree.
Mr. Chairman, can I, if I can make a suggestion slash request?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it might make sense for, if you had a chance to come in to the office and meet with me and Darren, the township engineer, and we could sketch out, you could kind of tell us what your thoughts are? And then Darren, and we can kind of sketch it out to, somewhat to scale. And then, then I think, I think then we can communicate that to the applicant.
Whatever.
And we, because we may also, depending on what you say, we may look at and go, it may end up making the plan better, may or may not be feasible because of, you know, the, you know, the requirements for the, the parking spaces and the drive aisles. But they, at least that way then, you know, then when we meet with the applicant, we'll have, we'll have an understanding of what you think. I think same thing with Bob, I know Bob Thomas has similar idea.
Yeah.
And then we can meet with the applicant and communicate to the applicant what your, what your, what your thoughts are as far as the layout. I have some, I'm doing some sketches here as well. And, and then I think perhaps that might make that, this next step more.
I'm, I'm happy to do whatever you think will help, Mark, because I know you understand what we're getting at. And I think that's kind of the, again, the advice that we, we gave the applicant last time. And, and again, they, they, it's not like they ignore this, it's just that maybe the biggest thing that could probably take care of, of a lot of problems with one fell swoop is just rejiggering the site. Now, you may get out a, a protractor, a ruler, and say, can't be done and angles don't work or something, the grading doesn't, I don't know. And that's why, whereas where I hesitate, is I, I'm giving this broad advice, but, yeah.
Well, that's why I was suggesting that, again, if, if you were to meet with Darren and I, we can go, we can discuss that with you. And then we can basically kind of like translate that into a, into a concept site plan to discuss with the applicant.
Didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. So, yeah, not, yeah, but happy to, happy to do whatever helps. But I, I think, you know, within a broad plan, less what Mark just said, that would, that would be our guidance. I, I mean, I don't think, I don't think your buildings, I mean, you've, you've shrunk them a bit and I don't, I don't think they're overly much for the site. If you were trying to squeeze the buildings and make them too big for the site, your variances would be setback variances. They're not.
Right.
They're not, right? So I don't think what you have is overwhelming the site, I just think the layout is what needs to be discussed. So that, that's my two cents anyways.
So, again, we welcome any other comments, but we've heard your feedback. I think we have a little bit of additional homework to do. I do know the client is interested in moving this along, so we would ask for the next available date and then we'll, we'll do scrambling on our end if we have to.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as you can, you know, obviously the staff needs time for review of any, any altered plans, I'll make myself available to Mark and Darren, you know, as soon as they need me, that's not an issue. Most days I work from home, so that's, I can manage that.
So Matt, I think 500 Atrium is one of yours?
Yes.
They're scheduled to be heard on, sorry, they're scheduled to be heard on October 8th. They were actually carried from a July 16th meeting. I don't know how, how much needs to go into that. If you wanted to push them off and put them on, that's totally the attorney's decision, not mine.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll keep Atrium on for October.
Okay. The next one is not yours, it's pretty big, so we can't fit them there. And then November 5th would be Davidson, which is yours as well, that's being carried this evening to November 5th. We can, we can put it, I'll put it on the agenda, but if all of your professionals can make November 5th, that would be the next one. Do you want a minute to talk to them?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay.
So we'd ask for November 5th continuation with no further notice provided.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think your other application at, is going to be too controversial, hopefully. 500 Atrium is because it sat for two years, so you'll be fine, I, I think, there. It's just, yeah. So you could choose, you can choose either one, it depends how quick you can get them done. But if you, you want November 5th, we can do November 5th.
Let's do November 5th.
Okay. November 5th.
Okay, so, again, you can reach out to me through email and just let me know, Matt, you're the attorney on, I don't know, you're the attorney on for both of them, correct? Okay, so you reach out to me and you tell me which one you want to go first, whether it's Davidson or this one.
Okay.
And I'll just follow your lead and so we'll make the decision that NP.
NPH.
Well, I'm just, so NPH Real Estate LLC, PLN 240005, is going to be carried to November 5th at 7:30 PM here in this room. So if you're wanting to come back, that would be the time to do so.
And we're going to, oh, actually, I do want to, if you'll give me a few minutes, I'm, do you want to open to the public that's here? Because if we're taking advice, well, we should probably hear it. I think we've given enough testimony, warrant opening to the public, but.
And to the extent needed, we extend the board's time of decision through November 2025.
Sounds good.
And you can just send me an email, it has to be in writing too.
Sure.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, so with that, I make a motion to open to the public for any public comment on this particular application.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody who wishes to speak, now's your chance because then we're going to send them back and they're going to come back November 5th, so here's your, here's your opportunity. Please.
Need some microphone.
Oh, yeah. Just give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Carol Schmidt, I live at 395 Windfall Lane in Somerset Run, in Somerset. I just wanted to say I'm totally opposed to the whole application, I think that's a terrible spot for a retail building. There's already several retail shopping centers on New Brunswick Road, many of which has empty store space, so the traffic there is already pretty significant anyway. Right across the street, you have the 55 and older community with a lot of traffic coming in and out. So I just, I, I can't fathom why we would, you would want, of all places, of all the spots in Somerset, you would pick that spot to put this, this retail space. So I just hope the board re, really thinks this through before you, you know, on top of which, the Onyx Warehouse, which is also percolating out there, which has, also has traffic problems, you're going to add this right on top of Onyx, which is just, to me, a terrible idea. So, thank you.
So just some educational point, Carol, and, and that certainly allow you to make any other comments. Unfortunately, legally speaking, the board, the board can't consider. other comments. Unfortunately, legally speaking, the board, the board can't consider uses like, oh, we have 20 dispensaries in town. Why do we need 22? I see that a lot. It is what it is, right? So the zoning, right, and so businesses will rise or fall according to market conditions. And, but unfortunately, it's not, a planning board cannot deny an application based on the fact that we got a gas station every corner. What needs to be done instead is you zone it so that you don't, maybe you don't have gas stations on two corners, make that not a permitted use, and make it a different zone. So you have to do it through zoning. You can't do it through denying or approving certain applications. So with that being said, and this being a permitted use in the zone, because otherwise it would be before the zoning board, not the planning board, I just give you an opportunity, if you want to see anything about the plan itself that you've seen tonight, assuming that it is permitted use.
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I move to close the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll be opened again at the next, when they come back in November. Anything else, Matt? We've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed for the next time?
We have our homework assignment. We'll be back.
Excellent. As do I, apparently. Thank you very much. Move to, anything else, Mark or Christine?
No.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night.